Like to now call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at six thirty P M. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Here.
Councilmember Ludwig is absent. Councilmember Shockley.
Here.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Here.
President Lima.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members in attendance tonight and members of the public in the event of an emergency can exit out either doors one or two to the front lawn or back parking lot of town hall. May have a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty second, twenty twenty three and July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three executive session minutes as a block.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
May I have a motion to approve the June twenty second, twenty twenty three and July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three executive session minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Clerk, did you receive any edits?
I did not.
Thank you. Uh, take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to public hearings and public comment on docketed items. So there are any members of the public here who would like to make a comment on docketed items this evening. Any members on Zoom? Going once. Going twice. Three times. Public comment on docketed items is now closed. Moving on to licenses. Item A, application for live show entertainment license Coventry Department of Human Service and Grow Coventry Community Fall Festival located at Camp Westwood, twenty ninety-three Harkney Hill Road, Coventry, Rhode Island. Event date, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, nine A M. to three P M. This is on pages fourteen to fifteen in our council packets. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua. Discussion. Manager Pirlo, any comments on this application?
Doug McLean did make a recommendation that this is a, uh, the event's fine, meets all his standards. And I did speak to Director Robelot, and he was requesting that the fee be waived due to Grow Coventry being a nonprofit if that would be acceptable to the council.
Any? Any question do with the, and was there any fire marshal check that's needed for this or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Any discussion on this application? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
I'll make a motion to waive the fee.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Shockley, second from Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Item B, application for fireworks license on September third, twenty twenty-three by American Fireworks, John Juicy, to be located at forty-seven Indian Trail R I Coventry R I, eight P M. As per Coventry Code one sixty-nine dash five, section G. This is on page sixteen to seventeen of our packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the application?
Make that motion.
Oh, second.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second from Vice President LeBlanc. Any discussion? Manager Pirlo, any comments on this application?
Julian, has Amasha gotten back to us yet on this?
Not yet.
Okay. I know they're still having an issue time wise with some of the applications. They're aware of it. They've made it abundantly clear to them on several occasions that we need to do better and have these ready for the council. I don't have a recommendation at this point.
Councilman Pasqua.
I spoke with John yesterday. He called me. Uh, he explained that he has spoken with Central Coventry and has a detail scheduled for this. Uh, so I would, I would say that we would want to prove it contingent upon uh, any issues with the fire department, making sure that they have a proper detail in place.
So should we amend the main motion or do we need to? Or no? Um, do I hear an amendment to the main motion to hold the license contingent upon fire marshal approval?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Shockley, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
We're now back to the amended motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Uh, moving on to reports. Item A, Daniel Pirlo, Town Manager. Proposed ingress and egress agreement for Lake Taco, four forty-six Ty Oak Avenue, Coventry, Sessors Platt, thirty-nine lot three, not sixty-five. This is pages eighteen to thirty-three in your packet. Manager Pirlo.
Yes, I received a request from Attorney Cronin regarding an easement. So the town owns property around the new soon to be Lake Taco restaurant. Um, there is some invasive species that they would like to remove uh, in coordination with D E M. However, the species are on our property. Uh, so they're requesting an easement to gain access to that property in coordination with D E M. To clear up that invasive species and I'm sure Mr. Cronin can answer any questions the council has.
Solicitor Angel.
I've taken a look at the easement. I know the project. I have no objection to it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cronin.
So, uh, the council is well aware of the, uh, Lake Taco project in the beautiful, uh, Lake Tyogue adjacent. Um, there's, the lake comes right up to that nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties cement patio. Um, we need to make repairs to that patio. So the plan is when the gates are opened and the water level goes down, that will make those repairs. Um, and we'll clear the frag mighties. I'm learning, I'm doing some ecological study out there. Um, and what the, what we would like to try to do is have the to, the town join us in this initial application and then enter into this maintenance agreement so that we don't have to continually come back before the council to get approval to do maintenance on the site. Uh, you'll note in the, uh, package that we had this insignificant alteration approval in two thousand and fifteen when it was Doherty's. They let it lapse. You know, so not only did they not do the maintenance, but they also let the permit lapse. So we're back before you. So really, we're asking for two things currently for, uh, Mr. Pirlo or some other appointee of the town. Be designated to sign the D E M. Application as the owner of the adjacent property. And once that is approved, subject to Mr. Angel's, uh, final uh, analysis of the easement, including any changes that D E M. Requires on that, that he be also be appointed to enter into that easement so that the insignificant alteration permit will continue until someone objects. So that, that's our request. Thank you.
Manager Pirlo, are you looking for, uh, vote for the council today?
Yes.
Uh, to open up discussion, do I hear a motion to? A motion to approve the proposed ingress and egress agreement for Lake Taco, four forty-six Ty Oak Avenue?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilwoman Shockley. Discussion, questions? Vice President LeBlanc.
Uh, I would just make a recommendation for councils amenable to it, uh, to the maintenance and easement agreement. On page thirty-two of one twenty-seven of our packet. Very first paragraph, the last sentence, it says, "The owner as its sole cost and expense shall compete, uh, complete the permitted work in a good and workmanlike manner." Similar to the last paragraph on page thirty-one of one twenty-seven, we say, "The owner, comma, their successor." I just don't, if this property ever sells, I just want it to, I don't want this to have to come back in front of us. I don't want there to be any question. I think it should say, "The owner or their successor shall bear the sole cost." Um, just my opinion.
Yeah, it's a, um, it's a distinction with a difference, um, with the LeBlanc. The, the paragraph on thirty-one deals with the conveyance which binds subsequent owners, um, to the exhibit. How can I go through the words? What this is, is the actual maintenance itself in this particular owner. Um, so you tomato, tomato, I mean it. If whatever's recorded, run with the land. That's, if the Crone can tell you that. So.
Would any future owner of the property have to go and get their own D E M. Application if they wanted to do the same?
O- only if it lapses a- as it has currently. Yes. So, yeah. O- otherwise, um, you would reapply in the form of paying a permit fee each year, not hearings or, or anything like that. As long as you pay and you don't break the rules, it continues.
And as outlined, whatever they do choose to do has to be approved by D E M. First anyway.
That's the first step. That's correct.
I guess I don't, I don't know. So I wouldn't hurt to add it. Yeah. It just says, "The owner," who would be Lake Taco, and then, or their successor. Um, but they're the sole cause. But that just, again, just my own recommendation.
No objection.
Did you want to make a formal motion, Mr. Blank?
Uh, I would, uh, I'll make a motion to add, uh, or their successor to that sentence.
Motion from, uh, Vice President LeBlanc. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
We're back to the main motion. Questions, discussion on the main motion? Councilwoman Shockley.
Uh, just kind of going along on what President Lima said to make sure, um, it's clear. D E M. Has to approve any sort of product used to eliminate the vegetation.
My apologies. It's, it's actually physical labor. Oh, they, they'll, they will be cut, bagged and removed. Uh, we can't use weed killer or, and then the area will be reseeded every year with local natural vegetation in hopes that it can outcompete. That's a little dicey, but, uh, so no, uh, chemicals. It, it's physical, cut, bag and remove.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that will remain intact so that we don't do anything.
It's, uh, it's in these. It's written into these.
Any further discussion?
Madam President, then I.
Manager Pirlo.
So the planning director, D W. Director Coventry's engineer all looked at it, all approved, um, of this uh, easement. The only caveat that, uh, Doug McLean made was that if D E M. Does not approve the application, then the easement over town land is not needed or warranted. And therefore, the town council's approval to grant this easement should be conditioned on the applicant receiving subsequent R I D. At D E M. Permitting. That was his two cents.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank the council. Try not to clog up your agenda next month.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Uh, moving on to item B of the Town Manager Support Update on Submittal of Stage One Application for Community Facilities Grant.
So I emailed everyone last week, I think it was last week regarding, uh, this new uh, grant that the governor's office, the state has come up with. So each city in town has been given, uh, a chunk of money to, uh, either build or redevelop a community center uh, in their city or town. Uh, we were obligated two point four million dollars uh, of that to eighty-two million. Uh, we have submitted our stage one application, which was a one-page, simple document saying that we are interested. We want to move forward. Uh, stage two application is due September twenty-ninth. That's a much more in-depth uh, process in which, uh, some of the directors need to kind of chime in on kind of how they see this, uh, programming and, uh, and building of the, of the programs moving forward. Uh, we have a meeting this week with the state, uh, on that. So thirty-four out of thirty-nine submitted a stage one application. The money that was not, uh, utilized is going to be, going to be dispersed amongst the other thirty-four. So there's going to be a, a change. We may be getting a little bit more money. Uh, after the stage two application process. For those communities that don't meet that standard and are not approved, that additional money will be also shared with everyone else that does, uh, get approved. So there's a good opportunity. We may get, uh, thousands of dollars more in order to move forward with this program. So I'm looking at all the, uh, buildings across the town. Uh, we've all decided that the annex next door will be the best use of the money. It's a huge facility. Uh, it needs a lot of work. It needs roof, A C, bathrooms, some plumbing. Uh, it needs sprinklers. It needs windows. It needs doors. Um, so the money is not going to go too far, but it's going to go far enough where we can establish a, uh, an infrastructure that's going to be able to house these programs, these programs. So this money, if we're approved, has to be spent by December of twenty-six. At that point, we have five years of programming that deals with work, education and health monitoring. So I guess the federal government makes periodic checks over those five years to make sure that you're adhering to that grant. If you do not, you have to pay the money back to the federal government. So I think it's a great opportunity, uh, to get a large piece of infrastructure in this town brought up to standards, uh, be a great hub. Uh, Mr. Robelot is extremely excited about this opportunity. Um, he's really taking it seriously. He's got a lot of programming already in, in his mind. Uh, as you know, he's pretty in-depth when he gets involved in something. Um, so I think it's going to be a real team effort, uh, with all the directors kind of taking, taking their part. Uh, Kevin's going to be the director of the actual, uh, infrastructure changes. Uh, he's going to set up a little, uh, sub-office over there at the annex. Uh, just to kind of keep that project going. Um, maybe it'll keep him around a little bit longer, we're hoping, until it's completed. Um, and then, uh, we'll go from there. So stage one is in, stage two is due the twenty-ninth, and we're going to move forward. That's the update.
Questions, comments from the council? Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions of the council. Item A, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine to enter into an agreement to purchase a twenty twenty-two Ford Police Interceptor All-Wheel Drive S U V for administration for the police department with McGovern Municipal H Q and Communications Services of Con, of Connecticut, I assume? Con LLC? For emergency, not Connecticut. Con LLC for emergency light slash siren. This is on pages thirty-four to thirty-five in your packet. Sure. Solicitor Angel.
Just. Sorry. Just in general. I want to point out to the council that these resolutions, to the extent that that agreements have been provided in your packet, they've been reviewed by me. If they're unacceptable, I, I will say something that would have, I would have a problem with any of them. Quite a, quite a list and quite a number of resolutions. With that said, in the future, to the extent that contracts are not attached, we want to make sure that we're only agreeing to permit um, a department head in town to enter into a contract subject to review. We've, we've been bitten by this at my brief tenure here, is what I've seen. We're, we've agreed to things in a resolution and our feet have been held to the fire as a result of that. Saying, well, you agreed to enter into this contract here in terms. Okay. So I just want to be, I want the care, I want the council to have that in the front of their brain when you're looking at these. I think the resolutions, fine, they do a good job, but as long as the department heads know and the council knows, it's subject to an actual final negotiation. We don't want to bind, uh, the towns we sit here. That's all. But to the extent that contracts have been provided, I review them. I have no objection.
Councilman Pasqua.
So would there be a recommendation that we amend the language to say that they, uh, need to be reviewed in the resolution?
I think that's prudent going forward, and it's prudent, it's prudent to do that this evening as well. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, before I turn it over to the chief, um, I'll seek a motion to a approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine, purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford Police Interceptor All-Wheel Drive S U V for administration for the police department.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilman Pasqua. Chief Ice.
Hi. Um, in October of, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, one of our administrative vehicles caught fire in our parking lot. It was a total loss. This is a request to, uh, replace that lost vehicle. There was a twenty-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars in insurance, and we're looking to use, uh, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty cents in impact fees.
Manager Pirlo, any additional comments?
No.
Discussion from the council? Councilman Pasqua.
Chief, just as a, a general question on, on the vehicles, um, that, that applies to this too. With the, the price of vehicles and the, and the way that vehicles are trending, has there been any thought to, uh, maybe do like the, uh, the F-one-fifties in place of the S U Vs? Because I think the costs are relatively similar. No?
So we haven't explored that, um, for the one-fifties and things like that, certain vehicles, you could maybe do it with, but, uh, we have gear that we have to throw in back and they have to be out of the elements. You would have to do with some sort of tunnel cover or something like that to even use a pickup truck and how secure it'd be with firearms and stuff.
Vice President Blank.
Uh, hi, Chief. Um, related to the impact fees here, the sixteen thousand, seven seventy-six, are these impact fees that have already been dispersed to you that you guys have not spent? Or are, are you assuming that you have impact fees the town has to disperse to you to use?
These have not been dispersed to us yet. These are the ones that were mentioned, um, seven days ago.
Yeah, there's a, this is the, from the list that Director Saviety, um, provided to the council a couple of months ago. Police, police has approximately three hundred thousand dollars in impact fees, right?
Got it. Uh, and that's a, an approved final list of the impact fees? Cause I thought that was, uh, still in motion and we were working on it. Cause, um, I know the school also believes that they have impact fees that we have to provide to them. I don't think we've dispersed them to the schools. I thought that was a working draft. That was my understa-
We haven't, we haven't dispersed anything until, obviously, the council approves that we're not giving any money to, uh, any impact fee money to any department unless it's, comes in front of the council.
So I guess that's, that's the reason for my, my question. So this would be the first dispersment out of those impact fees in that schedule?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
That's true.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from members of the council? Councilwoman Shockley.
Um, also to the impact fees, was this a way that you had intended on spending impact fees? Is this already kind of how you budgeted for that? I know not within the town budget, but, um, I don't know how much, I, how much planning goes into how we spend these impact fees, and I just want to make sure where.
So with this, originally, we're going to try and use some of our, um, auto repair money from last year. But we weren't able to execute at the end of the year. So this was another option to get, get it done.
Any further discussion? Um, in the spirit of Solicitor Angel's comments earlier, um, I think a motion is in order to amend the resolution. I'm looking at line twenty-six. Amending to affirms the award executed by the town manager, subject to legal review in accordance with, or should I say council?
Legal's okay?
Solicitor review. Affirms the award executed by the town manager, subject to solicitor review in accordance with and so on and so forth from there. So that would be my motion to add subject to solicitor review. Um, do I hear a motion?
Make the motions.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua.
I'll second.
Second by Vice President LeBlanc. Any discussion on the amendment? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Any further discussion on the resolution as amended? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to item B, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty, to enter into an agreement to purchase a Case Cracker Interview Room Recorder for the police department with Hunt's Photo and Video, one hundred Main Street, Melrose, Mass. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President Blank, second from Councilman Pasqua. Discussion, Chief Ice.
So, uh, the reason for this resolution is we're looking to update our soft interview room, um, with the same audio and video quality as our existing hard interview room. The soft interview room is one that's we use for, um, interviewing like sexual assault victims and, uh, children that have been arrested. So it's got like a couch and stuff like that, but we want to have the same quality as, um, our other interview room.
Uh, Manager Pirlo, any comments on this resolution?
No, I just think it's very, uh, this day and age is required, uh, to have more than one hot interview room. I think this is a worthwhile purchase.
Discussion from the council? Councilwoman Shockley.
Um, I just want to go back to the same thing, and maybe it should be discussed at some point, um, with impact fees, just, um, the planning that's put into how they're spent and, um, kind of what impact they, they will make. Um, I don't question this purchase. Um, I just feel like the resolutions put forth tonight really bring that, bring that up for me.
Further discussion from the council? Vice President LeBlanc.
I agree with, uh, Member Shockley. Uh, maybe part of the, the budget process, we consider just what's the plan for the impact fees that are, uh, remaining. Um, I, I think we should be discussing that.
Manager Pirlo.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's department by department, um, need, I think, that varies, but, um, putting some type of qualifications or parameters on that money, I don't think is a bad idea. But I think right now it's just general use of it, I think, is basically to supplement each department's budget that we couldn't get through, uh, things that are needed that we just couldn't afford budget-wise. We're going to, would, been kind of leaning towards the impact fees, um, for the time being. But again, I think, I don't think it's a bad idea to put some qualifying characteristics on that money.
Um, further discussion? Uh, do I hear a motion to amend the resolution to add to line twenty-five? Affirms the award executed by the town manager, subject to solicitor review?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilwoman Shockley. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua. Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Back to the resolution as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Item C, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one, to enter into an agreement to purchase two twenty twenty-three Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive S U Vs and their respective vehicle accessories for the police department with McGovern Municipal H Q, Global Public Safety for Emergency Equipment slash Lights and Motorola Solutions Inc. For radio equipment. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President Blank, second from Councilman Pasqua. Chief Ice.
This is to, uh, purchase an outfit or to patrol vehicle. This is to purchase an outfit or two patrol vehicles that we were putting in the budget. Vehicles used twenty-four seven, accumulate about forty thousand miles per year. Purchasing these two vehicles allows us to properly maintain our fleet in, in good order and also allows us to cascade vehicles down to our detail fleet.
Manager Perlo, any comments?
No, I agree with the, with the purchase. One's going to be covered by the budget and one was upper to the council. And I think the, the utilization of the used vehicles, if you want to say for detailed purposes, kind of keeps that revenue flowing. So I think it's a worthwhile purchase.
Vice President Blank.
Manager Perlo, if you could just entertain this question. It seems like we're purchasing these outright rather than using the lease program. And I, I thought we had a vehicle lease program because we were trying to offset some of the costs with purchasing outright.
So we do have a lease program with enterprise. I don't think police vehicles fit based on the mileage, the forty thousand a year. I think would really blow the lease out from what the parameters are right now. I think a majority of the vehicles, I think we have nine or ten right now that at least are departmental vehicles, mine included, that are more day-to-day, Monday to Friday to four. I think the excess mileage would, I don't know if A, if enterprise would even entertain it. I'm sure they would at a FD fee more than what we're paying now. And I've never heard of police leasing police vehicles for that purpose, but I can look into it further.
No, I, I just wanted some clarification because I think during the budget process, we always, oh, we're just gonna lease the vehicles. We don't have to worry about, you know, outright purchasing vehicles. And that's why it's, you know, lower in the budget. So I was just trying to.
Yes. No, I can follow up with enterprise. They actually left me a message. They want to meet soon and kind of rego, be
Sure.
review our contract.
Councilman Pasqua.
So I think to kind of bounce off of Vice President, Vice President Blank's comment, we can, I mean, financing is, is another option. I mean, it's, you know, lease finance is just a payment. So, you know, maybe, maybe that's looked into as well.
Well, my question then might be, what'll be left for your detail vehicles? Because they just end up being old fleets. So then are we, then are we then leasing new cars to be detail?
So I, I know typically in the fire service, what we do is we'll, we'll lease a vehicle, we'll finance a vehicle for the amount of time that we think it's going to survive. So a rescue gets a five-year note, a fire engine gets a ten-year note. And when that's, when that's over, we just schedule and we keep in our budget. We know that it's sixty-seven thousand a year for that lease for that ladder truck. And we just keep budgeting that. So when it hits the twenty years for the ladder truck, we turn it over to a new vehicle and we have the budget already. So, you know, just a different way of looking at it instead of just shelling out, you know, eight hundred thousand in our case, you know?
Yeah. Vice President Blank.
And, and I just, I guess going to the funding sources, a portion of this is actually being funded through ARPA. And I don't think that we've actually discussed spending our funds on this in the past. Is this, is this like a?
We, I remember we, we took out one car when we were doing the budget. We did. Yep. It's in the main, it's in the full ARPA.
Appreciate the reminder. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Councilor Shockley.
Just with ARPA funds, whenever we have items in the budget that include those, can we get an update? Just as a council, get an update that, okay, now we've spent this and this is what we have left because I just feel as if that should be something that's constantly top of mind for us and for the residents.
Yeah, as you make an expenditure, we can have Director Saviety update that, keep that, keep that active.
Fine if it's the next day, if he wants to wait till after approvals, just to clean the process, but.
Agreed. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to amend line twenty-six of the resolution, affirms the award executed by the town manager, subject to solicitor review?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President Blank, second from Councilman, Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to D, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two, to enter into an agreement to purchase Autel Evo two Pro six, six K V-three drone with accessories and Vidoc software for the police department with forensic mapping solutions. This is on page one oh nine to one-ten in your packets. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion for Vice President Blank?
One second.
Second from Councilmember Shockley, Chief Ice.
So these items will replace our current accident reconstruction, reconstruction equipment. It was just a total station. It's at end of life and is no longer supported. With this drone, we'll be able to quick, get quick and accurate surveying and three D action, scanning of accidents in crime scenes. This will help with our prosecution of criminal cases. The, this drone will also work with our current software that we use and upload seamlessly.
Manager Perlo, any comments?
Now, this is a vital tool when it comes to accident reconstruction, especially since we have the, the staff already trained to utilize what we currently have. I mean, I think it's a useful tool to have what the unfortunate extensive number of accidents and in particular fatal accidents that we have. It's, it's vital.
Councilor Shockley.
So when you say no longer supported, do you mean it's unusable now, the software? Okay. And then when you say this will work with our current software, is that a savings? And if so, how much? That we don't have to get all new software for a different brand or a different?
Well, it's just a component, component that won't be included in the price for this. It's a software that we're already paying for and have.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if, if you knew the cost, if, if you'd looked at other options and what the cost would be if we had to get new software.
We just want to make sure we could use something we already use, something that's compatible with what we already have to make sure that there was no issues and had to buy additional software and spend more money.
Yeah, makes sense.
Councilman Pasqua.
So in the drone world, there's really only two real options in public safety and it's Autel and it's, and it's DJI. And Autel is the more professional system. So I'm glad to see that that's on here. Do you have, how many drone operators, certified drone operators do you have currently, Chief?
We are, we have I believe four right now. We're sending another, another person to it this week coming up.
Okay.
To get licensed.
And, and I, I think it's probably important for the public to know as we're talking about a drone for the police department that it, it's not used to, for like surveillance or something. It's strictly for like accident reconstruction and, and tools to help you in those types of situations. I know a lot, the public gets nervous when they hear about police department drones. They think they'd be flying them over and, you know, looking for, looking for speeding cars or whatever, you know?
But this is more for mapping of a crime scene. If you have a crime scene outside, you could have a three D image of it made and mapped out.
And last question I have, but this particular drone, I don't believe it does, but is this coming, does this come with a thermal camera or is it just a standard regular camera on this one?
So this one, I'm actually not sure if it has a thermal cam, camera on it. It, I know it has low light capabilities. I'm guessing it would be thermal.
Okay. All right, very good.
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion to amend line twenty-seven of the resolution, firms the award executed by the town manager, subject to solicitor review?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
Back to the resolution as amended, any further discussion? Vice President Blank?
On the funding sources, it says federal seizure, seizure funds. How much does that fund currently have?
We have a hundred and forty-four thousand and one.
And, and that's just like a surplus over the years that you've been able to?
Yeah, it's accumulated over the years. When we built the building, it was run down some and then now we've, it's, it's gone back up that funding.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Kim, I saw the wheels turning.
No, it's just I'm, I'm looking at all these funding sources and then things come to mind like, how do we factor these into our budget every year? And if, say in a year where we overspent our budget, why weren't we using this money? Kind of, I've noticed over the years that as a council member, you find out about new things at every meeting. But I do think it's something that we should write down as important to discuss while we're discussing the budget. Other funds that exist this year, you know, we've used our ARPA for the past couple of years to fund things to keep them out of the budget. And I just feel as if possibly there are more options. I like the idea of always keeping some percentage for those what-ifs. But if there are other income sources that are we could use to offset one-time expenses in years outside of ARPA, I really think as a council, that would be the best thing to do for voters.
Vice President Blank?
Hence the reason for the questions of how much is in that fund, but I totally agree.
There are stipulations on how that money can be used. Just so you know.
I think finding those things out would be important for us as well, what the parameters are behind different funding sources.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
Item E, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three, to enter into an agreement to purchase thirty Survival Armor Kevlar Vest Uniform Carriers for Police Department with R.I. Uniform and Supply, Inc. It's page one eleven in your packets. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Yes, second.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilman Pasqua, Chief Ice.
So this is to replace our current patrol uniform outer carrier with a load-bearing one. It also has moly on it. So you can actually take equipment off your belt and, and takes the little, less of the strain on your little back and stuff. It's good for the officers. Also, it provides a stable platform for the body cameras as we go forward with that program. They are the current manufacturer that we have our plates made from now. So they will seamlessly with that style.
Manager Perlo, any comments?
Yeah, this is another necessary purchase. I mean, it's kind of the future of policing with the, with the body cameras and everything on, on the vest as opposed to around your waist anymore. It's supposed to hopefully dispense the weight and so forth and have less injuries and so forth. So I think it's just kind of part of the, the new day of uniforms.
Councilor Shockley?
So I, once again, I like the idea of this purchase, but did you get more than one bid? Cause you mentioned that it's the same company we currently work with and I'm just wondering if there are other companies that make this sort of thing. I'm sure there's not a lot. And if we looked at those as well.
There's other companies, but right now what happened is these are admin vests. They, they don't wear well with what we currently have. They're not load-bearing in any way. That's to replace these, but those, those Kevlar vests plates are made. These are actually designed afterwards, like an aftermarket type thing. Whereas those actually are made by that same company. So if we went to another one, we might have to buy all the Kevlar vests to put in those plates or place to go into those vests.
Okay. No, that's a, that's a very good explanation.
Further discussion? Do I hear a motion on line twenty-six to add affirms the award executed by the town manager, subject to solicitor review?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
Further discussion on the resolution as amendment, as amended? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
Item F, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four, to enter into an agreement to purchase sixty-seven Glock Duty Pistols for the police department with Parrow's Gun Shop and Indoor Range and one hundred thirty-six, one, that's not the same number. Is it one hundred and forty-six or one hundred and thirty-six? And, and the re- It's, so it says the same thing in both the resolution and the agenda. It's written out one hundred thirty-six, but then the number is one forty-six. Do we know which one is it, the real number?
I think there was a typo. I believe it's one forty-six.
So which one are we going with? Thirty or forty?
Let me look at the, let me look at the. I know they get extras to have on hand case some day. They do, they have backup. They also have extra weapons too.
I'd rather, I, I'd rather you not need to come back, so. Do we have the quote? Yeah, if you want to.
I'll get that answer.
Okay.
That's the last.
That's the last one. Yep. Vice President Blank?
Just a question on the, on the Glocks. Looks like we're getting sixty-seven of them.
Yes.
Do we have any to turn in that we get a credit for?
Sure there is in the series sixty-four trade-ins.
Yeah, and the funding sources.
Oh, sixty-four trade-ins. Okay. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Pasqua.
Are these firearms different than what you're using now? Is there any additional training required for these particular firearms?
There will be because these will have optics on them, whereas our old ones didn't have, they're just night sights. So they'll actually prove proficiency and accuracy with them.
What, what kind of training are we looking at? What cost-wise and so forth? Any idea? Would you, you know?
So what we're gonna do, we're normal qualification for the addition that we'll have a, a full day of training on them.
Any further discussion? To allow the chief to confirm the number, can I just get a motion to take the agenda out of order?
Make that motion.
One second.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilor Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
All right, just let us know when you're ready.
Oh, thank you.
Moving on right now to G, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five, to enter into a three-year contract to purchase Barracuda Network Email Archiving and Security Service for the town's IT department. Some page one fourteen to one fifteen in your packets. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilman Pasqua, Manager Perlo?
Yeah, so we've had the Barracuda Network as our cybersecurity provider for about eight years now. They are looking to, without going into a lot of detail about our cybersecurity, we are looking to upgrade what we currently have. Barracuda has an offer right now, a three-year contract for fifteen, fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. That's approximately over nine, over nine thousand dollar savings. So they, they reached out to Cody with this offer. We do need an upgrade in our network security based on what the trust has given us direction on. And obviously there's always a numerous amount of phishing attacks and so forth. So we definitely need a service. Cody feels comfortable utilizing Barracuda. So we're asking the council to approve this contract for fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. He currently only has, I think, five thousand in his budget for this. So we're going to use the revolving capital account in order to pay for the difference.
Discussion from the council? Councilor Shockley?
I might need a better understanding of the revolving capital account because I thought the capital account in general- I might need a better understanding of the revolving capital account, because I thought the capital account in general had to have a shelf life of at least five years. Am I misunderstanding the?
So the the products that did not get done at the end of twenty-three, we put into a capital reserve account. So we can pay for projects that weren't done in twenty-three that we can continue into into this year. So there's a among money in there for things that haven't got done yet, along with some other funds that we're going to put in there. So we see that this nine thousand dollars can come out of that account.
So it's just a revolving fund. The word capital I should disregard. It's not a capital improvement fund. It's.
I'd say it is. Obviously.
More funds than.
Yeah, we already did a resolution.
Yes.
Yeah.
So basically just carried funds over into.
Like the one that Mario Corrino mentioned they do.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly, because this is a three-year product.
Yeah.
Um, just a quick question. Have we had the state's cybersecurity infrastructure assessment done yet?
I would hold off on responding to that. Do it by number.
Okay.
This is a public mean, that's proprietary information. It's directly cybersecurity.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any further? Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, we're gonna move back to item F, Resolution 2023 dash sixty-four. You just flip back to page one twelve, one thirteen in your packets. Chief Heiss?
The correct number is one forty-six.
One forty-six. Um, so I didn't, I did not get a motion a second on that, so I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2023 dash sixty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilman Shockley. Right, so. With that being said, I'll seek a motion to amend line one thirty, uh, line thirty-seven to say one hundred and forty-six, just to be sure.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mo- uh, motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And I'll also seek an amendment to line twenty-five affirms the award executed by the town manager subject to solicitor review.
I'm making that motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Back to the resolution as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, moving to item H, one sixteen to one eighteen in your packets. Sewer tie-in application. Five seventy-seven, Tyoga Avenue Assessor Platt, thirty-eight Lot One Seventy-Six Dragon Ventures LLC. Manager Perillo?
On August ninth, the sewer subcommittee reviewed this application in order to recommend this tie-in be approved. Director Levec also provided a memorandum proving the connection to the, for the sewer tie-in. So I'm recommending an approval.
Solicitor Angel?
I have a question on the submission to the council. The memorandum seems to indicate that there are two pages to it. And the last words on the first page following conditions colon, which would seem to be the conditions would be enumerated after that. The next page in the package was seventeen, goes right to the resolution. It would seem to be incomplete unless I have it.
Madam Clerk, do you have the full memo from Mr. Levec?
I have the same in my packet. I can check into that if you'd like to wait a minute.
I know we had the full memo at the sewer subcommittee meeting.
Okay, but I'm I'm not sure what he sent me. I'd have to check.
Okay, um, I'll take the agenda out of order then. We can go back to that. I'll move on to ordinances. Item A, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash two, first reading of proposed amendments to Town Code Chapter Two-O-Nine. Streets and sidewalks adding section nineteen. This is on, starting on pages one nineteen in your packet. Uh, Manager Perillo?
So these were introduced a couple of weeks ago. They had some major errors. I made some major mistakes. Solicitor Angel corrected the document, and we're presenting it now for the first reading. For the snow removal, deposits on public property in the public right of way. Um, we've made some changes to that ordinance under the suggestion of Director McGee. The things that we think going forward makes the the ordinance much better for the town. We've also included an enforcement mechanism in there for people that do not follow what the what the new ordinance is, so. I'd recommend the council approve the first reading of the ordinance.
Solicitor Angel?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Director McGee and Manager Perillo. This ordinance and the next one is a good example of of department head uh, working with me to, and we have a process now that will follow, not just to Mr. McGee, but it's a good example of how to get an ordinance changed or a section of the code anyway. I haven't signed this as a positive endorsement, but I'll sign the original. So when you see the original at the full hearing, but I have positive endorsement.
And I don't think there's a vote from the council for it's a first reading. Yeah.
Just introduction.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, any discussion from members of the council? Um, I certainly appreciate some of the additions in here specifically. Two and three, which have been perennial issues. I've gotten phone calls about in my district, and I know some of you have as well. If there's no further discussion, I will move on to item B. Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash three, first reading of proposed amendments to Town Code Two-O-Four Solid Waste. Section twenty-eight, storage and collection of residential bulky waste. Manager Perillo?
Same, same dialogue here. This was revised after some changes from Solicitor Angel. I know Director McGee would like to make one change to it that I think I missed on the interpretation, so if I could refer to Director McGee.
Sure, Director McGee.
Good evening. This was pursuant to our conversation at budget time about adjusting the prices, which we have done. Uh, this puts it in, codifies it within the ordinance. On page two, C one. We're looking to strike out at the end where it says of seventy dollars per piece, subject to change. That will be consistent with letter C. Uh, sorry, three C, which that same sentence was struck out. It just seemed to got missed at on C one.
I'm sorry, slow down. Um, so what did you say to?
On C one?
C, oh, big C. Okay.
Yes.
Big C one.
The last part of the sentence of seventy dollars per piece, subject to change, to be stricken. And that's similar to three C, which is already stricken in the proposed ordinance change.
Does that need any action from us?
The the council can entertain a motion to amend this evening. It's it's obviously a scrivener's error. I assume, Mr. McGee, what we wanted to do here was not only to strike that language, but to include to be set by the council and published.
Correct.
By the Department of Public Works.
So add the same.
Correct.
Same. So you're striking at everything after fee. You, the, with with respect to the council, you should entertain a motion to strike everything after fee and to add the words to be set by the town council and published by the Department of Public Works, period.
Uh, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motions.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua on the amendment. Any discussion? Councilman Shockley?
So I just wonder, it seems we've stricken dollar amounts from the resolution just to make it easier to amend over time.
Correct.
So for A, why did we put an amount?
Because A, at your, at the council's request, we were not charging for bulk pickup center. And for the longest time, over ten years that I've been here, it was zero, so.
So I love that we're adding it.
We're.
But should we add it with the same language as every other item that had a dollar amount? And just say to be set by the town council and published by the Department of Public Works?
If I may, I think that's a great idea, because what it does is we change the fees, right? If the change, if the fee do change thing in the budget process, the only thing that would then need to come before the council is an amended fee schedule. And it's just published after that. So that's great for me.
Yes. I agree.
Um, so right now we're on that specific amendment on C one. So any, any discussion on the amendment? Uh, hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Uh, Councilman Shockley, did you have an amendment?
Yes, um, to big A, I would like to change the new language to the fee for collection of curbside residential bulky waste within the town shall be set by the town council and published by the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion from Councilman Shockley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice President LeBlanc. Any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
We're now back to the resolution, uh, I'm sorry, the ordinance as amended. No. Nope. Um, any further discussion, Mr. McGee?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to Council President Communications. Um, it was brought to my attention that um, the governor's office asked those who signed on to the Learn Three-Sixty-Five R I compact to add this addendum in accordance with the projects that the town manager referenced earlier this evening, the community facilities grant. This adds on the tenants of workforce development and health as part of our commitment in receiving those grant funds. So I assume we're looking for council approval of the addendum this evening. Do I hear a motion to approve the addendum to the Learn Three-Sixty-Five R I compact? And to, uh, allow the council president to sign the addendum? Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Shockley. Discussion on the addendum? This basically sets forth the parameters with which those, that two point, I think it's two point four million, should be used.
Yeah, this is part of the stage two application, is to make sure that this compact is signed to go with the Learn Three-Sixty-Five compact.
And and it's not that we have to do all these bullets. It's, this is a sample of potential ways that you can engage, but the, the world is your oyster. Um, any discussion? Um, I'll take the role. Uh, Councilman Pasqua?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima, yes, for in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Um, I'll just ask for a brief recess while the clerk goes and finds that memo. Um, I'll just ask for a brief recess, um, while, uh, the clerk goes and finds that memo. Um, so we'll go back to item H, sewer tie-in application on page one sixteen in our packets. Um, I'll also go to, uh, Vice President LeBlanc here, who's chair of the sewer subcommittee as well, but. The general parameters is that, um, this is the, uh, building that houses Dragon Palace on Tyok Avenue, which also has. Um, an e-sig and vape shop, it has a, um, health smoothie bar. Um, it has a lawyer's office, um, it has, um, residences as well. So, um, this tie-in application is for those businesses as well as a, a separate residential unit, that's. A, a separate, um, structure in the back of the parking lot. Um, so, um. That's what this is, uh, this tie-in application is for. Um, and this received the positive recommendation from the, uh, sewer subcommittee, uh, Vice President LeBlanc.
Uh, one thing I wanted to add was, um, I'm pretty certain that, uh, West Fork has wanted this building to be tied in. And they've actually given some notices to this building that they need to, uh, uh, and it's greater than, like, I think, over a year.
Yeah.
Old, so, um, that's, that's why they had come in front of us, so I just wanted to add that.
Um, clerk, can you go back and see if we had a motion and second for this already? I just want to make sure, I forgot where we were. Alright. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the tie-in application for? Uh, five seventy-seven Tyok Avenue Assessor Platt, thirty-eight lot one seventy-six, Dragon Ventures LLC?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Pasqua, discussion from the council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And. Alright, Solicitor Angel.
Thank you, um. Ms. Emma Toronto was out of the room, and I played clerk for a moment, recorded the vote. I just wanted to get it on the record while everyone stays here, and so that you have it, it was on the Three Sixty-five. Compact, uh, which. Pages. That, that was, that was under Council.
One twenty-four to one twenty-five.
One twenty-four to one twenty-five. Um. The vote was to be, the motion was to approve, made by Councilwoman Pasqua, seconded by Councilwoman Shockley. Uh, it was a motion to approve in directing the council president to sign the document. And the motion carried clear zero.
Moving on to public comment for undocketed items, are there any members of the public here in council chambers who'd like to make a comment on an undocketed item? Any members of the public on Zoom, public comment on undocketed items? Just raise your hand. Going once. Going twice. Three times, public comment on undocketed items is now closed. Moving on to introduction of new matters before the council, item A, approval of Verizon to be granted permission to lay and maintain underground conduits. Manholes, cables and wires, installing underground conduits, manholes, cables and wires on West Log Bridge Road. This is pages one twenty-six to one twenty-seven in our packets, do I hear a motion to approve? Um. Approve permissions.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Shockley, Manager Perillo, or, uh, Director McGee?
I would respectfully request that some verbiage be included in your approval. That Verizon must follow the town ordinance of any excavation in excess of three hundred feet, that it would be curb to curb repaving. So if they're gonna go all up West Log Bridge Road, they need to repave that curb to curb. Otherwise, that, that will be on us.
Do I hear a motion to amend the motion? So motion to amend the motion to now read approval of, uh, Verizon to be granted permission to lay and maintain. Underground conduits, manholes, cables and wires. With, uh, contingent upon, uh, following the town's ordinances. With respect to excavation and repaving. So a motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilwoman Pasqua, any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Back to the amended motion, Vice President LeBlanc.
This isn't our paperwork, that, uh, the work has been requested to support the wind turbine farm throughout the area. Um, this isn't a new wind turbine farm, correct? It's the existing. I'm just concerned about the verbiage on that one. So, just want to at least make sure I understand what we are approving and why.
If I may, um, the verbiage approves the infrastructure, doesn't approve. You know, any addition of wind turbines, so to the extent that there are turbines in the area that seem to service them. Whether they presently exist or exist. That's how I view the verb.
Though this isn't to support those wind turbines, and it's not for residential. Infrastructure upgrades. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, um, I would. What would be the, the, the way to, to do this? So I, I would request that they meet with me before it proves, how would I?
Well, they come before the council, my, my suggestion would be to ask questions for the operator.
Motion would be to continue to the September twelfth meeting.
Alright, so I would make the motion to continue the September twelfth meeting with Verizon present to, to ask questions.
Alright, motion from Councilwoman Pasqua, second for Vice President LeBlanc, questions on the motion to continue. Or discussion, rather. Um, once we continue, you can ask. Yeah, um, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Councilwoman Shockley.
Um. If this work was to be done, and, um, I think this is for you, Director McGee. I know it would go curb to curb, but would it be the entirety of the road? Or, I can't really tell from the graphic. Um. How much of West Log Bridge Road would be impacted by this? Okay, I just want to make, because I also feel West Log Bridge was on our list of roads to be paved. One hundred percent, I just wanted to make. I just wanted to make sure that if they didn't pave the entirety, if, if this project wasn't the entirety that we were gonna finish it, and there wasn't a. Partially paved road that would more quickly degrade. Okay, I, I think I would like, um, along with this project if approved. Um, that possibly we move West Log Bridge in case any funds do have to come from us, so we just get the road finished.
Alright, thank you. Oh, Councilwoman Pasqua.
What is the procedure in a situation like this? Do, do we ask Verizon to notify all the residents in that area that there's gonna be extensive work happening on that road? Cause there's quite a few houses on West Log Bridge. So, I just didn't know if there is something in place, or when, if we do adopt this eventually, uh, if we would have to. Amend that resolution for that.
You, you could, and you could also make it a condition of your approval for you.
Okay.
That they have to send notifications.
So that's that typical procedure, though, to just notify the residents that there's sense of work going on.
With, with, um, pole locations, I don't think so, because usually it's one pole and one location, but they're digging up a road.
Right.
This is the, so I would imagine this is an exception.
Yeah, I'm right, that's right, I agree.
Um, any other discussion on the approval? Alright, so let's continue to the September twelfth council meeting. And, uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn at seven fifty PM.
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilwoman Pasqua, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, we stand adjourned.